Jody, are you there, Jody? April 21st? Maybe? We haven't started the meeting yet. We're almost starting, though. Where's Matt? Where's your best friend Matt? Where's your best friend? Running late from cricket practice. Huh? 21st? Huh? That one I could do seven, actually. Seven. Actually, let's make it eight.
No, seven!
If it's seven, you'll have to feed me. Because I have practice till six. All right. Seven to eight. All right. We're going to call this meeting to order. Good evening, Jody. And it doesn't say that in there, I'm kidding. Good evening and welcome to the City of Mountain House City Council Meeting for Wednesday, March 26, 2025. City Clerk, can you take roll call, please?
Councilmember Green?
Here.
Councilmember Harrison?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Here.
Mayor Sue?
Here.
And let the record reflect that Councilmember Disco is absent.
He's going to be late.
Okay.
Let's have a moment of silence. All right. Councilmember Harrison, could you lead? Did you lead last night? I can't, I can't keep track of those things.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You go so fast.
Who goes fast?
My socks are not matching.
Yes, they are.
All right. Next is approval of agenda. The mayor asks for confirmation of any changes or deletions to today's agenda and announces a request to arrange the presentation in the following order. Rank, security, Mountain House Police, and fire. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that re-approve the agenda as stated.
Who wants to second?
I will.
Green seconds. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Public comments, right? Is that next? Oh, I can't see. At this time, the public is invited to make comments on items of public interest that are within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction and that are not listed on the current agenda. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. I'd like to remind everyone about the guidelines under the Brown Act. Items brought up during public comment that are not on today's agenda cannot be discussed or acted upon by the council. However, the city council can refer these matters to staff for follow-up or make brief responses. Items necessitating a response will be included in the next city manager update and posted on the city's website. First one, we have Ann. Is that Ephraim's mom? Ephraim's mom. Come on, Ann. Welcome. Is that on? Press the button. There you go. Now you're on.
All right. I would like to ask if the city council could, I guess, reach out to their staff, the legal staff, and the law enforcement staff to have a discussion on if there is anything that the council can do to help protect their residents' Fourth Amendment rights. We currently have a situation where ICE is running around detaining people with no warrants, and it has happened in New Jersey, it has happened in California, and we're tiny, and I doubt it will really happen here, but I would really prefer if the council had some kind of a policy where they say, "We will not cooperate with ICE." Also, I've met some of the police officers here. They're great guys, and I think it would be easier if someone tries to reach out to them and say, "Hey, could you guys cooperate with us?" If they said, "I'm sorry, I can't. It says in my contract, it says in the Mountain House rules, I am not allowed to cooperate with you." So then they can just say, "Oh, I'm sorry." I'd also like if the city council can reach out to the school board and find out what they can do about the ability of these people to come onto property to talk to minors without their parents' permission, whether the city can help them with legal help to say to the parents, "Here's a card that says you don't want your child to be talked to by someone without your permission." I don't know what is possible, but I'm sure that some experts exist who can say, "You can do this." And I know enough of you guys. I know what side you're on. I know you do not want the children here frightened. I know you do not want vets confronted and detained. I know you don't want them to grab Native Americans and say, "You look Hispanic." So I trust that you will do the right thing, but I want to put it on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. We'll look into it. Steve?
Yes, we'll report back.
Next, we have Gabe Holbert. Holbert? Welcome. No, you turned it off.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Mountain House City Council. My name is Gabe Holbert, and I represent Home Run Financing, where a property-assessed, clean-energy PACE administrator that finances energy efficiency, renewable energy, water conservation, and disaster resiliency home improvements for property owners voluntarily through their property taxes in over 325 California communities, including your neighbors Tracy, Manteca, Stockton, Lathrop, Livermore, Pleasanton, Brentwood, and the unincorporated areas of San Joaquin, Contra Costa, and Alameda Counties. Thank you for your time this evening. California property owners are facing a crisis. As a result of historic drought, wildfires, and storms, homeowners face challenges of increasing insurance and energy costs in addition to public safety power shut-offs. Mountain House is no stranger to this. As residents face these challenges, the demand for measures such as solar panels, backup batteries, generators, water efficiency improvements, and efficient HVAC systems, among others, has increased despite these upgrades being out of reach for many due to high-price tags and limited access to affordable financing. PACE is a transformational public policy that solves this problem. Unlike other traditional methods of financing that require large down payments and have high variable interest rates, PACE provides these improvements with no upfront cash required and at fixed affordable interest rates that is then paid back through special property tax assessments. All these benefits are offered with no taxpayer dollars or with any legal risk for the city. PACE delivers results not only for the property owners, but also for the small business owners that step up to complete them. As a result of PACE, over $2.71 billion of private capital has been invested into California's local economies. Since AB 1284 was passed in 2018, the PACE industry has delivered best-in-class consumer protections, including rigorous underwriting standards, financial disclosures, and verifying the ability to pay, among other measures. Mountain House residents had access to PACE before your city incorporated, when you were part of unincorporated San Joaquin County. However, since incorporating as a city, Mountain House residents no longer have access to PACE and thus cannot use it to improve their homes. The California Statewide Communities Development Authority, CSADA, Open PACE Program, has three providers, including Home Run Financing, who operate in over 325 local jurisdictions throughout California and have numerous years administering PACE. By joining CSADA and the Open PACE Program with a resolution at a future council meeting, you can give Mountain House homeowners access to PACE again. There's not a more beneficial program for you to make available in your city that will give your homeowners access to these home improvements with zero taxpayer dollars or legal risk. I encourage you to pass a resolution at a future council meeting to once again ensure Mountain House residents have access to PACE. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's already made contact with staff prior to the meeting, so we'll follow up.
All right. No more public comments? No? Let's move on to item number six. Recognition, announcements, and presentations. Trying to figure this out. You have 6.2.
It already reflects the rearrangement.
Without changing the numbers? So we're doing 6.2 first? Captain Anthony DiFrenzi, rank, security. Is that what we're doing? All right.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, and staff. Today, I have our stats from February 17, 2025, through March 17, 2025. We had 762 calls. Oh, the button, sorry. 762 calls, of those, we've had 50 crossing guard assists, 20 suspicious vehicles, five trespassing calls, seven suspicious persons, four traffic hazards, and five reckless drivers. In three days, we did a school safety enhancement data collection for police services. We had 18 vehicles fail to stop for pedestrians, 19 stop sign violations, seven helmets, children without helmets on, eight seat belts, and two obstructing traffic while they drop kids off or pick up. And we are announcing vacation checks for homeowners, so if they go on vacation, they can call our dispatch and give out their information, and we can go by and do a vacation check when the officer is available. Officers will not go behind locked gates or if there's dogs or other animals in the backyard. We are going to be putting daylight education program, morning parking violations on vehicles. On the back of it, it says what the violations and stuff. Basically, this is for people that park 20 feet within the crosswalk area, around schools or any other crosswalks. Many questions?
Your last thing, it says a citation will be issued without further notice. Whereas this page is actually a warning. So should it say the citation may be issued?
Yes.
Because you're not saying 100% they're getting one.
No.
I'm his partner tonight, Bob. We're doing a warning time between now and the 1st of April. So warning citations will go out on the cars. We're telling them that this is truly a warning. Starting April 1st, we have the ability to not give a warning, but just give the citation.
I guess it's just not clear in this document that you're saying a citation will be issued without further notice, or this... It's either/or. I mean, can't you just say, or you can say, "In the future," I said.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because this is confusing, like, you're getting a warning, but we could give you a citation, or a citation will be issued without...
You're correct. So they're getting warnings today. These will go away. These won't exist after the 1st of April. After we do the hotspots in education, if they're parked there after what we've given out warning-wise, they're going to get a citation for violation.
I'm just saying, yeah. The warning should not say a citation will be issued. There should be, like, "In the future," or something like that, too.
This is a sample, we can make that correction.
And I agree with that, because that "or" leaves it up for a person's discretion. I could either give you a notice, or I could have your car towed away. It's the "or," like, there's an option. And I think that that just leaves it for a question of subject. Well, if you give some people a warning and then some people get towed away, then that's a problem. The "or" bothers me.
That won't exist after the 1st of April. Right now, it's just a warning. No action will be taken other than that. Good points, though, and we'll make sure, if we have something in the future, we'll correct that.
Okay. You've been putting these out already?
Limited, because we're waiting for the card stock that will withstand the wind and everything else. Yes.
Okay. Yeah. If possible, to try to correct those, but if not, it's okay. Yeah, we want to start. The other question for rank is, all those things that you caught, you were not able to tick at any of them, right?
No. No, that's just what we observed.
All right. Question?
How many people did you observe? Like, how many cars? Is it a lot of cars?
This was for three days, and we're still collecting data. So that was just for three days through different schools. So we had officers out there in the morning time and then in the afternoon. So they would pick an area, and then they would just give the stats of what they saw.
You just, you don't have those with you right now?
No, he had it.
I have, I have.
Oh, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Go back, go back.
I was distracted, I'm sorry.
That's all right. No, one more. There, right there.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
Probably about four. Four. So you had two officers in the morning time hitting two different schools, and then the afternoon, you had two officers hitting when the schools get out.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was asking, did you know how many vehicles were parking within the 20-feet zone? That's what I was asking the date on that, I'm sorry if I confused it. Two different questions, yes.
We're not gathering any data of the hotspots.
Thank you.
We know where those locations are based upon the deputy or the public works director has said, "These are where we want to concentrate." That's where they'll go.
Thank you.
Who's next? Sergeant Grubb.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for having me this evening. I will attempt to present the LT's presentation here. And I pushed the button, like it says.
We haven't seen him for a while. Is he hiding from us?
Push it again. There it goes. There's a picture of him, in case you forgot what he looks like.
That's from like 10 years ago.
I'm going to provide for you tonight some statistics from last month of February, and it's going to be compared relative to January. In January, there were 978 calls of service. February was 936, so just a little bit less calls in the month of February. Traffic stops are about the same, 208 to 216. That 108 citations were all issued on one day, and that's, we did a collaborative traffic enforcement day with Tracy PD, California Highway Patrol, Mount House officers, and then County SSD Motors. They came out, and I think there was 11 motors or officers, and they issued 108 moving violations and gave zero warnings. Traffic citations issued in February were about 214 compared to 188 from January. And then out of that 214, 64 of those were for stop sign violations. Or 64 were for stop sign violations. I might have said my number's wrong. Parking citations are the 29 that you see there, and parking citations are generally complaint-based or related to school issues. In July, we are anticipating rolling out our e-citation. It's still in the process of getting completed. E-citations will be helpful with crashes and citations as far as making the process smoother, more efficient, and there's some added benefits of, it has locations and charges where you can quickly identify, you know, hotspot areas or pull up, you know, violations that you're concerned with. Crashes in February are down, down to seven from January's was 11. So it's slightly down, but that's kind of the hope that we get when we're out doing traffic enforcement. We hope that collisions will decrease. The public awareness campaign about kids and helmets, we continue to have our school resource officers contacting kids at school that are not wearing helmets, giving them warnings. I believe we only did issue one citation for helmet violations, but we are planning some other events along the lines of like a bike rodeo where we will cover helmets. And then we're also focusing on scooter violations and trying to educate kids and parents about the proper uses of those e-bikes, scooters, and helmets. Public awareness campaign for parents is we continue to be vigilant, and whenever we do contact someone at school, I know I talked to the motor officer a lot of times when he writes, "Parents for their kids not being in seatbelts," you know, you try to educate them, the reason why we're doing this, you know, it's for the children's safety. And then you stop someone, you know, around the school, you try to tell them, you know, "We're doing this because we want people to slow down and watch out for pedestrians and kids and everybody." we're doing this because we want people to slow down and watch out for pedestrians and kids and everybody to be safe. What, this is a picture of Deputy Aleary. She has come to Mountain House. She began her career in, I believe it was 2019 as a deputy. And she was transferred out here on Monday, the twenty-fourth. And Deputy Brunetto, who was already out here, was transitioned to the new school resource deputy. And he actually is very thrilled to do this. So you can tell from the smile on his face that he's happy. That's basically all I have unless you have any questions for me regarding anything on this line. All right, thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Wait, come back. All right, who's next? Chief, Chief Corn, Corn something.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Sue and Vice Mayor Tingle and City Council. Tonight, I'll be presenting our public safety report for the month of February. Our calls. We've had, we had forty-nine, forty-nine medical and rescue calls, a total of seventy-two calls, and three fire and three good and thirty, and twenty good intent. Our good intent calls are canceled and route, public safety service calls, false alarms and those such things. So that's what the good intents are. In our training, we are pretty fortunate. We are very fortunate to be able to be part of our county OES drone program. Mountain House is a pretty integral part of that program. Myself and a few other members are creating a countywide drone response for the county for any types of natural disasters. And so we meet once a month. And so next month, I believe, we'll be here in Mountain House and going over some mapping of our new station in our area along Old River. We also had a couple of members go to two different trainings this month. Engineer Whitaker went to, down to Corona in Southern California for Corona Crunch. It's a very advanced vehicle extrication class. We sent him down there to get some new innovative training techniques and bring back that information and different opportunities for tool identifications for us to be able to look into the future for any of those types of tools that we could use here in Mountain House. And then we also had some members go up to Boise, Idaho for a training up there. And Boise, myself, Deputy Chief Fulmer and Engineer Dugan went up there to get some leadership training and also some hands-on training. Station two is coming along. It's getting very, very close. We're hoping, anticipating for the, for it to be finished in April completely. And then we'll do our soft move-ins, make sure that all the toilets flush and all the lights come on. And then we'll be ready for a grand opening here. We'll give our dates here soon. And in fire prevention, we are sending out our weed abatements for the month of, in April. And April is a good month for us to be able to give those letters out to give the last rains a chance to set in before we have any abatement so we don't have any late rains. And then have those who are abating have to come back and abate again. So we're going to do our best to make sure we keep that from happening. So the letters will be going out and we will be hitting those target areas that we typically have issues with in the past. We'll hit them hard this year. And for those who are really good at making sure they abate their weeds, we'll leave them be for a while. We also had a staff training here at City Hall. It looks like our guys are having a good time, but also the members of the Mountain House staff had a good time. We went over fire safety and fire extinguishers. And then our monthly safety tip for the community is, since we sprung ahead in time, is to change our batteries and to make sure that your smoke detectors are within a ten-year parameter. If you have any questions, they can call the firehouse. And then we also engaged in a reading across America. Captain Fisk and Engineer Barzamian went to Altamont and did some reading to the students of Altamont Elementary. Any questions?
Councilmember Green?
I like that fire extinguisher training. Do you guys do that for the community also? Because a lot of us have, well, not a lot of us, but a lot of them have fire extinguishers they don't know how to use.
Absolutely. We, if you go to the website, we have classes that we can put on. And as soon as the class fills up, then we're able to deliver that class. We also serve that class through our SER program as well. So just go to the website or you can call down to the firehouse and make an appointment to get that next class.
I will do that soon. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for your report.
All right, we're moving on. Item seven, city council consent items. Consent agenda items will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member or member of the public may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Anything you want to poll? No? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve seven point one.
Who wants a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
City council policy and action items, eight point one. We're going to approve, or no, we're approve the city of Mountain House Crisis Communications Plan as an appendix to the municipal emergency operations plan. Amanda Durban. There you are. Yeah, hello.
Need to lower it a little bit.
Lower, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. I'm here to present the adoption of the Crisis Communications Plan. Staff recommends this Crisis Communications Plan as an appendix to our Municipal Emergency Management Plan that we adopted at last council meeting. This plan protects public health and safety by guiding how we share information in a crisis. It lays out roles, ensures messaging is consistent, and builds public trust through transparency. This plan has one goal, protect our community's health, safety, and well-being. It gives us a clear guidance on who says what, when, and how. So we all share one voice. During the 2017 floods in Manteca and Thlethrap, people were caught off guard. Roads closed and houses flooded. With a strong plan, we can avoid this type of confusion and deliver the right message at the right time. This plan follows proven emergency protocols such as SIMS and ICS. The Public Information Officer leads communication across four phases, initial, maintenance, resolution, and evaluation. We also include tools like social media, Everbridge alerts, and information for our website. We activate this plan when there's a major public threat like natural disasters, health emergencies, or reputational risk. The city manager or emergency director will determine activation based on an incident. Messaging during a crisis is rooted in empathy and facts. We do not speculate. The PIO issues all official and approved news releases and ensures public gets the information they need fast and accurate. We'll use media and social platforms to share real-time updates, stop misinformation, and direct the public to our website for official information. Our main spokespersons will be the city manager and mayor, depending on the situation. Again, staff recommends adopting the plan to strengthen emergency and response and public trust. When a disaster strikes, will we be ready to speak? Of course we will because we have this amazing plan. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions. You are so clear.
Awesome.
Any public comments? No? Bring it back to the council. Anybody want to make a motion? Deanne?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to.
Second on this side?
A second.
Green? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
Good job. Amanda?
Durban.
Durban. Eight point two, consider appointments to the San Joaquin County Special City Selection Committee, SCSC, and to the Integrated Waste Management Commission. Who wants to join those? Calls on Margaret Wimberly to present the report.
We've had a request for regional appointments. To the Special City Selection Committee and the Integrated Waste Management Commission. Staff received requests for these appointments. And you can also, as part of this, appoint an alternate should you wish to if the primary appointee is unable to attend. The City Selection Committee was created by Health and Safety Code. And as far as meeting frequency, they meet one time per year and they're tentatively scheduled to meet in late April of 2025. For the Integrated Waste Management Commission, that was created by Public Resource Code and Board of Supervisors order. I did reach out to staff. They indicated they meet as needed and that the task force really has not met often in the past few years, but it's anticipated that they're going to meet one to two times a year in the next five years to address some upcoming issues related to waste management. The current, we have a list of current council appointments up here. And you can see we just need appointees for the Special City Selection Committee and the Integrated Waste Management Commission. And staff recommends that the mayor, with the concurrence of the council, appoint a council member and alternate should you desire to each of those committees. And I'm available for any questions.
Who wants to volunteer for this once a year?
I'll volunteer for the Special City Selection.
The SCSC?
Yes, sir.
Too many SCs in there for me. All right. And who wants to volunteer for the once every few years Integrated IWMC? Rhonda?
Every few years.
Yeah? No? Up to you. Don't fight.
Reason why I was saying, in looking at the list, if you go, I'll go back to the list. The prior slide.
That one?
Yes.
Harrison's on there either. Well, no, Harrison's on the veterans.
And Councilmember Green doesn't have any assignments.
Up to you. Do you want it?
I wouldn't mind, however, Councilmember Green does work in the Bay Area. And depending on the times and the days, I don't want it to be a conflict. So if there can be a backup to that.
Vice Mayor Tingle, then?
You can add, you can add alternates as well for both positions.
Let me make a motion. Is this where I make a motion? No, actually, this is where I open public comments. Any public comments? No. I closed public comments. Bring it back to the council. Anybody have any further discussion? You okay being backup?
I'm fine, I'm fine going for both as a primary if somebody else will back me up as alternate on both.
All right.
Up to you, either way.
That would be the same as being a primary.
That was what?
So I'll be the primary for the waste management and you can be my backup. And then I'll be your backup for the other one.
Sounds good.
Good cop back.
Okay, thank you.
Good discussion. Let's move forward. All right, this is where we're in. Do I make a motion here to appoint Councilmember Disco to the SCSC and Councilmember Green to the IWMC? And they're each other's alternates?
Yes.
Can I get a motion? Well, I just made a motion. I need a second.
I'll second that.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
Good discussion, you guys. Nine point one, we're moving forward. Mountain House Traffic Calming Program. Kusan, you got big, big issues to task.
Good evening, Mayor, City Vice Mayor, council members. The item before the council is regarding the new traffic calming program, which is, would be the milestone for our community because it might enhance our traffic safety in the future. This is our line of the tonight's presentations. Firstly, I'm going to talk about overview of traffic calming program. Secondly, we are going to talk, I'm going to talk about traffic calming measures, list of the traffic calming measures and criteria, how we meet some criteria to implement the program. I'm going to share some examples and specific consequences associated with the program. I'm going to explain the procedure with a flow chart and Q and A. This is overview. So tonight, I'm going to introduce the new program to the council. Based on the council's feedback input, the program will be updated. And we are going to schedule the public meeting sometime before the mid-April so that we can get some more feedback or input from our communities. Step is going to return to the council on April twenty-third for adoptions. If the city council adopts the new program manuals, step is going to start receiving traffic calming applications, prioritizing projects, implementing pilot projects, and also evaluating implementing pilot project and as well as evaluating result and associated cost. We might update traffic calming program as needed. So many people asking, what is the, what is the traffic calming? Many people actually raising the very fundamental questions. ITE, Institute of Traffic Engineers, announced this terminology for the first time in 1997. It says the combination of mainly physical measures that reduce the negative effects of motor vehicle use, alter driver behavior, and improve conditions for non-motorized street users. It started with very humble terminology. Now, traffic calming is nationwide program because it's enhancing safety, traffic safety very effectively. I believe that the first measure, lane striping, tells all about traffic calming program. The first one is from another larger city. This is called racing track by the resident because the motorists, the driver feel that I'm driving in a very wide roadway. We simply striped a little more and adding some bike lane. And motorists started feeling that actually it's not racing track, but kind of narrow street. So overall, average speed was reduced significantly. This is all about traffic calming rather than installing the major structure or something. Speed limit signs is also one of the components. Mostly the trailers is the first step to collect some speed data, not just the speed limit signs. Highly visibility crosswalk, the photo is from the Mountain House communities. Centerline treatment, which is called bot dot, giving some alert to the drivers. And this is one of the most critical components for the program, speed enforcement. Speed hump. This is effective for mostly parking lot, but still this is the last resort to the city because we don't want to reduce emergency vehicle speed. That is very important for our community. Speed lump, the left side photo, that is was taken from our communities. That's a permanent structure. However, our program recommend some temporary structure which is plastic. Technically, it lasts longer than asphalt. Technically, it lasts longer than asphalt because we can simply install and when traffic pattern change, we can technically remove them one as needed. So it's more flexibility, way cheaper, but way, very effective based on actual hands-on experience from other communities. Speed tables, everybody slow down except emergency vehicle. Raised crosswalk, very effective for our city, city hall parking lot. Traffic circles, when it comes to the larger scale of traffic circle, which sometimes is called roundabout. Bubble out, very effective way to reduce the speed as well. Pedestrian island, that increase alert to the drivers. Chicane is very similar to bubble out, but as you can see on the second, the photos, actually we are shifting alignment a little bit so that we can reduce the speed automatically. Partial street closure and full street closure, this is very effective for some events, July fours or something, some events temporarily, but we will maintain minimum 50 feet clearance for emergency vehicle throughout the process. Now we are, I'm going to talk about criteria. The street, some specific street would qualify for traffic calming measures, for example, traffic, traffic lump, if 85% of the vehicles on the roadway are traveling exceeding minimum seven mile per hour, then the, the speed limit. In this case, for the residential 25, as long as the speed limit is exceeding 32, the project will be qualified for the traffic calming, the program. Sometimes people asking why 85 percentile? Because we don't want to reflect UPS vehicles. It's like a vehicle representing the speed because they go stop, go stop very slow. It's not representing speed of the vehicles on the roadway. That's why we remove a slow or just one event, very high speed because it's not representing overall speed of the vehicles along the street. Now we are going to talk about examples and specific consequences. This is one example from Mountain House, for example, here, Brett Avenue, almost approximately 100, 800 feet length. But if the program require two-thirds of impacted resident approval to move forward the traffic calming programs. And also, for example, if you want to install traffic lump, we got to have 1% kind of approval from the resident within 100 feet both sides. So this is one example. One resident with another agency called, one day before installation of a traffic lump, and the staff was asking why, why we want to cancel the entire project? And the person asked, what if it creating so much speaking noise or sudden stops? Or it might affect my home value? That's a very reasonable questions. The benefit, main benefit of traffic calming is that we don't have to install that one permanently. Based on any traffic condition in the future, we might modify or remove without concerning about liability issue. That's one of the major benefit for traffic calming programs. This is another really good example why we require resident consensus. It's not just a city's one decision. And we receive some complaint about speeding along one street. If the city just install something, we just shifting the problem to the neighbor because speeders can choose any street to go to their destinations. That's why the consensus is the key component for very successful traffic calming programs. This is another good examples based on the people's input from another agency. Many people was confused with traffic calming measure and traffic control measure, which include the stop sign. We receiving a lot of requests that why don't we just install stop sign here or over there? A little over 20 years ago, another agency received so many complaints. Somehow they installed two stop signs in a very short distance. No one expect this, I mean the consequence, but however, it made worse. Because it's a human nature, you know, very, I mean, very, during the rush hour, driver realizing that I'm losing couple of seconds in the first stop sign and they are going to lose another second in the stop sign. And they started ignoring the stop sign. It creating more problem, more near hit accident situation. The resident came back to the city hall, almost every single council meeting, asking to remove the stop sign. It is why it's very important to take a formal procedure to assess overall conditions rather than just install something. This is a really good lesson we can use for our program. This is overall flow chart to flow of the program. We set up the two stages. Stage one is much faster and easier. Firstly, we are taking the report and initiating project. And we might set up community meeting or conduct community survey. So based on that, we start collecting traffic data and start public education, traffic enforcement. And also, again, we are taking some data. Still, the condition is not improving, we are moving towards the stage two. Additional very brief traffic study and the city will select applicable traffic calming measures and set up the community notifications and community meetings. Then we might go back to the city council for approval for some specific project or department might approve for minor, small project, which including like a striping, simple striping. And then we always make sure that we are conduct assessment after we install some devices. Because we don't know what's going to happen in the future because we can expect humans, the responses based on that, this program. This is very difficult forms the resident can feel. This is not just one simple phone call, this is a community consensus. That means that resident need to work together to make this happen. Again, this might be milestone for our community. So staff develop this program because we don't rely on consultant. This is a really good for our community. We are very committed to enhance our traffic safety, that's why we are presenting this presentation tonight. I can answer any question you might, you may have.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Thank you for your presentation. I have, my first question is for stage one on the traffic calming. What is the, the cost on that? Phase one, stage one?
City has one traffic sign trailers, solar powered. So normally we install that one to collect the, the speed data. So there would be no additional cost except steps hours. And then the collaboration with code enforcement. So technically, stage one, there's no extra cost to buy something else.
Okay.
But stage two, yes, we might require to buy something like a traffic lump or something else, signs.
So stage one, we're, we're hoping for community buy-in and they suggested so. And I always feel if the community buys into something, they're more than likely would want it to work and follow it. On stage one, what is the timeframe of getting people to give input and ensure that we get a good sample of the residents for buy-in?
Normally, we set up that types of trailer along the street, minimum two weeks, that's our recommendations because one or two days not enough to, to collect enough data. So once we set start or initiating the process, we are collecting some information, set up the meeting with, I mean, our resident and collect the data, assess the data and giving back. We make a decision that stage one is effective based on some traffic enforcement. It might take one month to six months, it depends on the conditions.
Sorry, so it'll be a trailer that people would just come to?
Yeah, trailers, yeah, as I mentioned, it might, yes. We already have a trailer, we don't have to purchase.
Speed limit trailers, right?
Yes. And also speed limit trailer has a function to collect the speed data. So that means that, that people travel and the trailer actually collected some speed from the vehicles.
So that's really step three, the data collection after, so were you asking more about?
The data collection, step three. How do you get a good sample from everyone? That was, I was more concerned about the data collection to ensure that everyone is able to give some input.
So once we receive the speed data, so 85 percentile speed data, we are going to share the information with the resident so that we can discuss further. For example, how we implement the traffic enforcement based on what or where and when? Once we implement the first phase of the, towards effort, we are going to conduct additional effort to assess overall the speed. Because it might improve the speed, the condition a lot or very minimal, then we might make a decision to go to stage two. So that means that there's a several step to assess the data to make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Green was next.
So my question was, so I understand about the, the speed bumps and I agree, we can't put them all over the place because it will slow down emergency vehicles coming in. Now, on the ones that you showed in the picture, the, the rubber ones, are they rubber, plastic?
This one.
Right here. Now, do those have sensors on them?
I'm sorry?
Do they have sensors on them? No.
No sensors.
Okay, but they're removable? So if, exactly, so if we collect the data, right? And then we see that it would be good to put these in certain areas, we can then just put the black ones as opposed to putting all these humps in those particular areas. And if we need to remove them?
That's right.
We can remove them if we see that there's not a problem after. Okay, that was my question.
Exactly.
Councilmember Harrison and then Disco.
Thank you. The traffic calming, calming project that you're talking about, it seems like it's just towards motorized vehicles. Are we doing anything about the e-bikes? Or the scooters that are driving faster than the posted speed limit for the cars? Because there's starting to be a lot of problems for the folks that are driving their motor vehicle.
E-bike has a new technology. So mostly these types of traffic calming measures, we are targeting the vehicles, that e-bike. I think that it's a little more giving, I mean, gearing toward, I mean, the enforcement rather than putting the types of structures. That's what we are thinking at this point.
Councilmember Disco.
Yeah, I think there's some kind of stipulation on the type three e-bikes where you have to be at least 16 and those are the ones that are going pretty fast. So I suggest we look into what we can do there about enforcing?
Yes.
16 and over operation on the ones that go over 25 miles an hour because there's a lot out there. My question is, what's the life cycle on these rubberized ones versus installing the speed humps? If the rubber ones were to be a permanent installation, what is the life cycle on that and the cost comparison to something like the asphalt ones that would only get resurfaced when the rest of the road is getting resurfaced?
Yeah, the, the black, that plastic traffic lump was installed several, maybe seven or seven years ago. But we visited the site, but we don't see any deformations, it lasts very long. But based on the company specs, they mentioned that it lasts minimum 10 years, but based on our inspection, it lasts way longer than asphalt. Because asphalt is very vulnerable to heat and some other temperature, high temperature, which is not good for our central valley. That's why we strongly recommend the plastic option rather than permanent one. And also, permanent one is very expensive and hard to remove if we decide to change in the future.
And what are, what are the cost comparisons when you have to resurface and remove those? And what are the, what is the likelihood of them in damage removing them so you could resurface the asphalt?
Yes. The temper, the, the photos, council member can see here, it was approximately $3,000 just for materials. Installation was done by city staff, it's not very difficult, it's just drilling hole and fastening the road structures. It was very easy.
So the staff could remove them and then just add new, add new asphalt anchors?
That's what was a very easy task and cost effective. The resident was so happy, they came back, that's why the city had to install two more along the street because it was very effective.
So it's in-house, we purchase and install?
Yes.
From the manufacturer versus Ty Hart or somebody taking a bid on?
That's right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
A clarification, so the cost, if any, would be in the stage two and not stage one?
Stage two, stage one, as I mentioned, they might not be the major cost because we are utilizing existing equipment. But stage two, if we decide to install the traffic lump, for example?
Okay.
Minimum $3,000, the material cost plus tax and then the labor by the city staff. And then we, sometimes we need to put some new signs or some striping to give us some warning to the drivers. But at this point, in the past, on another city, estimated about $50,000 per year, but actual cost was much, much less. Because we are not installing this one a lot. Only, only the areas exceeded some specific criteria. That's why the setting up the criteria is very important because we cannot simply install because we saw some two or three vehicles speeding on the street.
That question?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Any other, Disco, you have another question?
I did. Oh, yeah, so by introducing this program, will this also empower and help segue? Like, will this segue and move it empowering residents to have a better opportunity to voice concerns about requesting traffic calming in their neighborhoods compared to what we have now?
Much, much better. Because as I mentioned, it's not just one, one resident complaint. We are going to collect overall complaint in the regions, in the area, reflecting more the issues we didn't expect, anticipated in the past.
But how, how do we collect that now versus like the, the random complaint on Nextdoor or, or Facebook? Like, how are we logging?
Yes.
Like, are people calling into the city and saying, people are driving way too fast on a squela, a block from the school on the curve? Or how are we, how are we logging that and where are we tracking that data?
So that, it is why at the end of the, I mean, the presentation slide, I, I present, I displayed a form. So if the resident feel that, oh, this is very out of our control, then they are going to submit the form, then the city staff will take that action immediately to handle that issue for the, I mean, the, our resident.
Was Brett Avenue an example or was that a real life? Like, was that a real life case where people have been complaining that Brett Avenue in Wickland on one of your slides where you had showed adding speed humps and depicting, you know, within 100 feet that everyone has to agree? Was that, is that a real life scenario or is that just an example, like a template?
No, that's a real, real samples and it's, it's all the program here is approved with other agencies in the past. So fortunately, I was able to lead many project in the past, all were very successful. And then the key thing for this successful program is to interact with the resident. It's not city-driven project, we are always listening to. We are always listening to resident input or feedback. That's a very crucial process for a successful program. So we will always listen to resident concern. That's the key for this program.
Wonderfully answered, thank you.
And in the past, now we'll have this manual that people can look up on the website, whereas in the past it had been more, we budgeted so much money a year, we'd get calls in, we'd look at them all, decide which ones merited consideration, but it was more informal than now we're trying to, I think we can have a lot more impact once we put it in a programmatic manner here where we can just say, if you're interested, here's the process to go through.
And also, we will make sure that people can start in initiating the process, not only throughout the phone, but also throughout the GoGov communication tool, not just one way, the several, the ways to help our resident.
All right, thank you.
Welcome. So staff will return on April twenty-third for the options.
Let's move on to nine point two. We have an update on the Go, where are we? GoGov, My Mountain House app. It says GoGov. Jody.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council, Jody Elmassey, Deputy City Manager, and we have a GoGov update. All right, for our recommendation tonight, tonight it's really just an introduction of the topic, and so we're looking for your feedback on usage and current opportunities for improving what we're doing. A little bit of background, the GoGov platform was originally launched in Mountain House in 2014. It really laid the foundation for what at the time was envisioned as a modern, tech-driven opportunity for citizens to access municipal services. When fully utilized, the, the platform really is intended to enhance the civic engagement by improving resident access to services. It streamlines, it streamlines communication between residents and local government, and it just overall makes it much easier for folks to be heard. That's what, that's what they want. They want to be heard, right? So there's two primary ways to access the platform. The first and most recommended, in, in my opinion, is through the mobile app, My Mountain House app. It's super user-friendly. It's something that can be done on the go when you're taking a walk or you're driving and you see something. And then for those who want to use the more traditional route, you can find it on our city's website under Service Finder if you click on Report, and that's another great easy way to use. One of the most critical functions that My Mountain House or GoGov provides is that it consolidates services in one spot and it really does provide that real-time information. A little more background, key to the function is obviously citizen engagement. It's an easy way for residents to report issues that they encounter throughout the day, which it might be like a pothole, graffiti, code violations, and it provides that tracking of request status and you can get occasional updates from staff. And then in terms of an operational perspective, it provides our team the, you know, ease of managing and assigning requests. It's that automation through generating analytics and then, of course, being able to geocode, tie it to our GIS and Google Maps. It's worth noting that similar platforms have already been utilized successfully in San Joaquin County. Our neighbor jurisdictions, that City of Tracy and City of Stockton also use the, the platform. And it really is great because it's going to provide us that comparison of benchmarking, how efficient we are at delivering our services as we continue to invest more time in this. It really underscores a broader trend of leveraging technology so that we can foster efficient governance. All right, so getting into some of the analytics, for 2024, you can see here on this screen, we had eight hundred and one service requests. This really averages to a little bit over like three per working day. And in our monthly service requests were around sixty-seven. And important to note that our year-over-year growth from 2023 to 2024, we saw an increase of seventeen point six percent. In terms of downloads of My Mountain House app, we had a thirteen percent increase. So what does this mean? It really signals there's a growing reliance on GoGov for city operations. And the, the graph on the right, if you take a look at this, it's crazy, it's a seventy-three percent increase since 2020, so that's huge. So besides just the number of seventy-three percent, what is that really telling us? You know, more residents are using the platform. It's becoming more integral to day-to-day operations. And then, of course, you know, it really hints on the bigger picture of our city's growing. We're expanding and there's an expectation from residents to be able to deliver services properly and efficiently. All right, so this graph on this that we have up here, I thought it was interesting. It really just shows how the requests are coming in, the breakdown. And forty-eight percent of the requests are still coming in through traditional means, so just over the phone, an email, in person at the front counter. And so what this means is we have an opportunity to start leveraging more of the My Mountain House app. So we're looking at opportunities here. All right, getting more into the analytics, you know, what is our most common service request category? So this was kind of probably a no-brainer for you all, but coming in at fifteen point two percent, we have code enforcement type topics. Obviously, in the lead, operations and maintenance is the winner here at seventy-two percent. And then, of course, police services. Without saying, we can see what's important to residents here. This trend just kind of validates or reaffirms where we need to allocate resources moving forward. All right, of course, measuring how well are we doing, right? So we have all the analytics. How are we doing in delivery of service? So this graph here really speaks to how quickly can we close a service request? Right now, we are averaging between twenty-four to forty-eight hours to just generate a response. And in terms of providing a closed service request, or we'll say resolving the issue, we're coming in around nine days. So the good news is that we have a touch point with residents within the first twenty-four or forty-eight hours. That's a great internal target. Of course, not every request that comes in is the same. Some are obviously easy-peasy, low-hanging fruit, but some require a little bit more complexity. They might almost be a mini project. And so with that, there's an opportunity to look at how we might tackle that work differently, and we'll speak to that a little bit later on. And we're going to speak about it right now.
I couldn't see the bottom of the thing because the, can you go back to previous? Yeah, the caption is blocking the, what is the red and the green again?
So the red speaks to exceeding?
Exceeding what?
Response time.
What do you mean by exceeds response time? Like out of, in the six to eight day range?
Mm-hmm.
Thirty-three met and one didn't meet? What is that?
Exceeding the expectation, is that what you're saying?
No, I don't think that's it, right?
Okay. So your question is, can you restate your question, Mayor?
I don't understand the red and the green.
So red indicates the number of service requests that have exceeded a target. So depending on different service type categories, we might have some at like three days or seven days or five days. So this is just a big picture that speaks to, like, in the instance of the very far right, we had a hundred and eighty service requests that exceeded maybe twenty-one-plus days. So we had some service requests that were just out there hanging as opposed to on the very far left, you could see we had a hundred and forty-seven service requests that were closed out and resolved very quickly within the first two days.
Okay, this chart's a little confusing, but.
So that's great feedback. We can work on different ways to present data.
So of the, so you're giving different days for different types of issues?
That is correct.
All right, so that's the, yeah. But a hundred and eighty that have gone over twenty-one days?
Mm-hmm.
Seems like a lot.
That is a lot.
It is.
So.
And so that's where speaking to the, if I might, the complexity of the service requests that come in, where, again, is it just a simple pothole or is it really something bigger, like a mini project? Sometimes the request is, hey, we paved the street or do some greater, more robust repair where it's going to be its own standalone project that we may not put out to bid for six months and wrap it up with other work. So that's where there's that context that's missing from just a simple display here.
Wow, so that's, like I said, that's why this looks terrible, but I don't know that it's really terrible.
So that's the good news, most of them are green and?
The last three columns are?
Horrible.
You know, again, it's just the way it's presented.
Mm-hmm.
Like I said, if there's a project that's going to take six months, well, then the goal shouldn't be three weeks, it should be six months, right?
You are absolutely correct, and that's one of the things, we'll just go ahead and move on. So you make a great point, Mayor, in that how we approach some of those service requests, they are a project and we do not want to continue keeping those project type of things as part of this platform. It needs to be separated out. So those are some of the improvements that we're making that we're going to talk through very briefly on this slide right here.
All right.
I'll hold my question then.
Yes.
Go ahead.
The question that I had on the previous side, so slide was, even though it wasn't resolved, that hundred and seven people or what have you, were we getting back to them to let them know that we have no answer, we're working on it?
We could do a better job.
Are you following up with people at least to tell them that you're in the pipeline and giving the stats along the way?
We could do a better job, Vice Mayor, and so one of the areas that we are looking to do immediate improvement is code enforcement. Code enforcement is an ongoing thing and it isn't a one-and-done because of the process of engaging with a customer and going through that, we'll say, warning phase of trying to get the engagement and the communication to have the item addressed before ever having to talk about citations or anything of that nature. It's a very long and drawn-out process. So if you go to the third bullet on this slide deck for our expansion efforts, we have a very code, a very specific module that is tailored towards code enforcement that's going to help us with our resolution times, it's going to help us with a lot of that automation with notices that go out. We have a small and mighty team of just two individuals. Al joined our team just a couple of months ago. This is going to help us out tremendously with that engagement piece.
And I think you've answered my question. We're trying to work better on letting people know that when they report something, even though we don't have a resolution, that, letting them know that their request has not fallen out of void here, that we're still working on it so people don't think that they've been forgotten.
Absolutely.
Okay, we're giving feedback along the way.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear.
All right, Councilmember Green and then Harrison.
So I just want, my question is more of a clarifying question. So when we look at the twenty-one-plus days that things have not been resolved, is it the kind of projects that can be resolved in twenty-one days? And of course, to Vice Mayor's point, to be able to get back to the people that are reporting this, but are these projects reported by individuals about other individual houses? Because when you're talking about the whole code enforcement thing, it, you know, it kind of gets a little fuzzy there for me because if I call and report my neighbor's tree is falling, does that fall up under this that needs to be resolved or, or is that their issue? So the code enforcement thing is throwing me off.
Councilmember, so what's probably difficult in that graph is that it includes every service type. So it's going to include code enforcement, it's going to include the project example I cited about paving, it's going to include the tree example you cited. It's really everything. And so on the next steps with this slide, what I would like to see and what we're going to do already and perhaps we share back with you is that now we're going to start doing a deep dive into the various service type requests and kind of get into the data and just really focus on one area and, and know it well and just kind of take that very tailored and focused approach. And we could share the very specific feedback with you.
So it would be a difference between, the feedback would be a difference between paving a road call as opposed to a complaint call?
Yes.
And how that was dealt with?
Because they're treated very differently.
There's a difference between, you know, this road is bumpy and we need to pave it and that's going to take six months as opposed to the other one. So that, that's what I'm trying to get the, to differentiate between the two.
A hundred percent.
Okay.
Valid point. In terms of other, just general next steps with our platform enhancements, we're updating our frequently asked questions, we're trying to reduce duplicate submissions, we want to continue our outreach and training to push the My Mountain House app. We already spoke about the code enforcement module that we're launching hopefully very soon. And then in terms of operational improvements to help us tackle the bigger projects, we're looking to establish on-call contracts so that we can leverage our very small team that we have here.
Do you have a question?
I have a comment overall for the GoGov request and letting people know, which is a good idea, the, letting people know how to navigate through the various medias. Have we thought about, since we are growing in leaps and bounds, as the new villages or new people who are moving in, when we have community meetings, to have them go through a little quick, three to five minute on how to use the system, what's available so people hit the ground running when they move into this wonderful city, that this is how I navigate, this is how I get through. They get early on training and I think that that would help the numbers down the road if you catch people early on. I know when I moved here two centuries ago, we had community meetings and they told us how to do things and that helped.
Great idea.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
All right.
Catch people early on.
Disco, you have a question or comment?
I think Harrison was ahead of me.
Harrison, you turned your thing off.
No. Okay. So there's a few feedbacks from like the Apple Store about like there being map and geo issues. Have those been resolved? That's as recent as December. Do you know?
No, I do not know, but I could look into that, Councilmember.
Yeah, I mean, if you check the App Store, there's none on the Play Store, but on the Apple Store, there's complaints of poor UI in December and then in November, the GPS. I've had that happen too with me. Since you started your presentation, I realized I don't have this on my device and for the past twenty minutes, I've been trying to get a password reset to and I haven't gotten a notification or email in the past twenty minutes trying to get that. So that might also be, and also when submitting requests, it's not very user-friendly. The, 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 the flow of going in and finding the type of request you're trying to, like, I don't know if we have an in-house UI or UX person or somebody who has experience in that, maybe even Amanda, to like kind of run through this and dummy-proof it and work with the developer because it is, it's pretty bumpy right now and some of the feedback in the App Store reflects that. And then my last question was, can we go back to the types of requests that we've been receiving and the data shown for the three major targets that people are submitting? I had some questions about that. So police service and public safety, what type of, I understand public safety, but it, like in my mind, the public safety concerns would be like sidewalk bump or a tree root pushing up the sidewalk, so that would fall into operations and maintenance. So I'm wondering like between parks and rec, because if it's an issue in the park with the grass or a sprinkler, that would ultimately fall back into operations, operations and maintenance. So what kind of data are we pulling here for the parks and rec, police service and public safety? What can you report, even fire? Like what, what can you do with this app to reach those assets that you wouldn't call nine-one-one or directly non-emergency for those?
So anything non-emergency, like, like Kusan presented on speeding and traffic calming, something like this could fall under public safety. So there is a blend of topics. So there is a blend of topics, you know, there is items under the more public works traditional that would speak to what Kusan presented earlier. So there's definitely a blend and crossover. So depending on how that requests come in, we might send it down one path line as opposed to another. There is some still manipulation on our end.
So would the police service on this note be traffic then?
Police services is, it's, this is something that is non-emergency. You have, uh, an issue with, uh, a, a, we'll say.
Barking dog?
A sign is, is down, you know, you see somebody has knocked down maybe a speed limit sign, something like that, it could again fall to police services or our Public Works Avenue. So it's really broad. Moving forward, probably wanna consolidate police services with public safety.
Or tra- or just call it traffic or something, yeah.
Absolutely.
Cause that's really, and the, and the fire, same thing, unless it's like a fire hazard, the, the fields that are, that we debatment's not done, I'm sure that's probably what all 15 are for, yeah. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions you have, or you're not done, right?
That pretty much wraps up the presentation. Uh, we're at the end fiscal impact, no fiscal impact at this point, just discussion. Again, a recap of the recommendation, looking for your feedback. And that concludes the presentation.
All right.
The, uh, the only feedback that I had was the, uh, point that I brought in earlier is that as people move in, when you're excited about the new community, you're more apt to learn and wanna come to meetings, so catch people early on, so we start out in a win-win.
Noted, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jody. Next we have 9.3, General Plan Overview, Brad Wall.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, my name's Brad Wall. I'm one of the, um, contract planning staff with the consulting firm JB Anderson Planning. And, uh, considering, let's see, is there a better PowerPoint to show? There we go. So, uh, the topic of this presentation is general plan basics in consideration of what we expect to be the, a, a city's general plan, um, effort coming up, um, in the future. So I'd like to review some of that material. A little bit of background. The, the city does have some relevant or related policy documents that were adopted upon incorporation. Uh, among those, the San Joaquin County General Plan, uh, at least the portions that relate to the city of Mountain House, and then the city's master plan, as well as three specific plans that cover the community. So as you see here, um, the state law does require that every city and county adopt a general plan. And the master plan that the city has is, contains a lot of the material that a general plan has, just not all of the, it's lacking some of the technical components, um, and, and content, but a, a lot of that material in the general plan is, does exist in the master plan, and we'll touch on that again later in the presentation. So what is a general plan? A general plan is required by state law, and it's commonly referred to as a constitution or a blueprint for a local agency's growth and development. It'll provide, uh, a, a vision for, um, a couple of decades long. And as, as that horizon comes closer, in that 20- or 30-year timeframe, there's usually an update to that general plan so that that horizon or build-out scenarios never reached. The general plan just is always a target or a goal that a city can grow towards. Um, it identifies and prioritizes commu- community issues related to quality of life and development, and is the basis for, um, land use and development. So as related to other policy documents and regulations that a local agency has, you see here in this graphic, the general plan is sort of the overarching document that guides the others that as you go, you know, farther down the list, you get toward the implementation, so. Uh, specific plans would be consistent with the general plan and help to implement it. The zoning or development code is sort of the day-to-day practical tool that, that we use to implement those policies, and then the, the blue squares at the bottom are representative of the different, uh, planning application types and entitlement processes that developers and property owners would, would u- use to apply the general plan and the other policies as they develop individual projects. This slide indicates the various general plan elements or the topics or subject matter that, that are contained. Land use, housing, transportation, you see the others there. The housing element is unique in that it has a, a separate, um, its own sort of state law requirements. It's typically updated on an eight-year cycle, whereas the general plan overall doesn't have a, a prescribed schedule for updating. But the housing element again is unique and, and, uh, the state has specific requirements for that. So what's involved in a process in developing a general plan? So among the first steps would be to document existing conditions. It's sort of the starting point for building and developing your general plan. There's always, uh, a robust public participation process involved. As you know, there'd be a series of workshops and opportunities for the public to participate in the process because again, it's sort of a, a, a vision document, and it's nice to have buy-in from the community overall a- as that is prepared. Uh, the policies of the general plan, again, they, they guide the development and, and growth of the city. Um, there's some other general plan content. We'll talk about that in the next slide as well. And then environmental documentation is, is a routine component of, of a general plan. So for general plan contents, you know, there's goal, policy and implementation. So the, the goal is, you know, overarching, uh, aim or, or aspiration. A policy can help define programs that can implement or try to achieve that goal. And then implementation is more practical, you know, day-to-day activities that would achieve the outcomes. So just as an example, you know, maybe there's a goal of that the city become a, a family-friendly community with employment, education and services opportunities in the community. And then a, a policy to help implement that might be, okay, well, each neighborhood should have a, a one-acre minimum commercial site that, that has places where people can shop, where they can work, or where they can, um, get services. And then implementation might be standards, um, and standards in the code that would facilitate that policy. So. Again, it's a pretty quick overview of the general plan process, um, be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
And we wanted to give you this too, cause I know four of you went to the Planning Commissioners Conference at the beginning of the month, you heard a lot of about the housing element, a little bit about the general plan. We have 30 months to adopt a general plan. As, as Brad mentioned, we have the basic outline of a general plan already with our master plan, but we are gonna be required to go through a process, as he said, to fill in some of the additional details, and we will provide you with more context at a later date. You know, one of the things we have to think about is timing and, and some further discussion about how, how much do we wanna talk about beyond what's in the, the master plan? But it is a very, now, we do have a fee that will pay for the cost of this over time, but we do have to front that cost because it's a fee that's charged per building permit, and it takes a long time to collect all the funds to pay for the, the general plan, but it can easily be a $400,000 to $500,000 dollar process just to do the basic elements of a general plan. And, and so part of what we wanna be thinking about is, uh, and we've had a lot of discussions with John over what we're, uh, city attorney on what we're required to do, but since we have a pretty well-defined plan in place, our thought process is, what do we really need to do to meet the basic state requirements? So if you wanna kick in on that, John, we want to show you, it's a kind of a basic document, but there is a lot of work that goes into all those general plan contents and elements.
Yeah, well, I, I, I think the, the, the point Steve is making is that we already have a, a pretty significant framework of a general plan in that we have the Mountain House Master Plan, so a lot of the, a lot of the bones and, and most of the muscle is there, uh, but we need to add some other things, so. So this isn't gonna be like a full-on general plan update or a brand-new general plan, so, uh, so we're hoping to contain it somewhat in terms of the effort.
Right, I mean, there's a lot of communities that, back when incorporation were easier to do, you had maybe four different disparate communities that had all grown up over time and then kind of consolidated into a city, and in those cases, it's probably a multimillion-dollar process to create that first true master plan for the community. And I think that's more what the law was contemplating when, when they put these requirements in place. But nonetheless, this is part of the law, this is something we're gonna have to do, just as we're gonna have to figure out the, the statutes related to incorporation really don't address all the changes in the statutes to the housing element, the housing portion of this, and so we're gonna have to probably work with the state and get more guidance on the housing portion of this, which could be a massive process all by itself. We're still working through all that information, we'll probably talk to you about that more at another meeting, but we wanted to give you an update and just get any feedback now. Our assumption is, we have a master plan that's very close to a, a, a general plan. Now, if, if you're looking at doubling the size of the community time in the near future, then we'd have to go through a very, I'm talking about adding beyond the master plan, that's a very different process than just checking the box and doing what is required to essentially convert our master plan into this, uh, document that, you know, the, the consti- the planning consti- we need to, it's not truly our planning constitution until we've checked all these boxes. But again, this is not as extensive a process as if we didn't have any planning documents in the past, there's a lot that's gone into the community, so unless you have an appetite for saying, well, we want everything between here and Tracy to be included in our, our vision right of way, that's a very different process than we need to just check off the box and get our plan converted to our constitution. And we're assuming that at this point in time, that, and it's kind of what we've talked about in previous presentations, that you just wanna take the master plan and convert that to our constitution. If there's council direction that you wanna look at that differently, we need to know that now because it's a very different scope of work. So we thought before we came back to you with a contract to do the general plan, we wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page.
Vice Mayor.
I have a comment. Uh, as you were giving your presentation, you did, um, make the comment, um, one of the goals, uh, Mount, early on was Mountain House, a place where you can live, work and play. But just 35 years ago, it was planned that there would be a lot of, uh, businesses out here, and things have changed, so to that end, and I think the, uh, the, uh, city manager kind of spoke to that, that we should have to, we have to go back and tweak that because it looks like there'll be more housing than, than work. So those are the kind of things that need to be addressed because, uh, the work opportunity, a job for every household, it, that's not gonna happen. That's my opinion, it's not gonna happen.
Yes, certainly, that's a, a major consideration going into a general plan, is just to, it's an opportunity to sort of re-establish the community vision, and if things have changed, and again, it goes back also to the existing conditions report. If, if conditions are such that, you know, we're not gonna have a lot of employment, then you know that going in, that's good, but there are also opportunities perhaps to enhance the employment opportunities through the policy development and the way the general plan is, is constructed.
Point that out, a revisitation, which is in order now. We're halfway built out, so it's time to revisit those things. Thank you.
All right, any other questions, no? Let's move on to 9.4, City Manager Update.
So we always start with our community concerns and responses, just as we will, uh, next meeting. We have confirmed that, uh, we are not contracting with anyone on, uh, coyotes, and there's no one on staff dealing with coyotes either, so there's no coyote mitigation occurring in Mountain House proper at this time. Uh, we also had, uh, an inquiry from Councilmember Harrison about the, the Mountain House Tech Center, uh, and, you know, the, the status of tenants coming in that building. And attached in more detail to your, uh, city manager update is, uh, the, the leasing information on that property, and believe it or not, there are three major tenants in that building right now. And there's about, out of the 513,000 square feet of space, 46% of that space is now leased. So there's nearly a quarter million square feet of occupancy in that building right now. And so I thought that was important for folks to note, they are still out there actively soliciting for additional tenants. There's two only partially occupied buildings and there's one building empty, but anyway, if you go to the back of your report, you'll see in more detail which spaces are leased, which spaces are not leased at this point in time, and who the, the companies are at this point in time. In addition, we wanted to point out, as I noted last time, that whether the building is full or empty, they are subject obviously to property tax and special tax. And, uh, right now in properties tax and special tax, it's probably the number-one tax generator in the community, it generates about $552,000 a year in property tax and special tax. It also pays $175,000, uh, towards the debt service for the utilities as well. So it's definitely a, whether there's no one in the building or half or full, it's a major contributor to our tax base here in the, uh, community. Uh, you can see that we're, that our communications division is getting a lot more folks connected, more on Facebook, more on Instagram. See our goal, we're at 891, trying to get to 1500 this year. Uh, she's continuing to work on the, the logo survey is still out there for establishing the city logo. Human Resources, we're finally getting our 457 plan underway. We wanted to get everything else dealt with payroll before getting the 457 plan set up. And then the big, major effort over the next three months is our class and compensation study with RGS, which was an important component of our existing labor agreements, so there's a lot of work being done right now, they're looking at every single position, uh, in the district. Uh, also noted is that back when we issued the bonds, the, the, the lease revenue bonds back in 2021, uh, we wanted to, uh, increase our flexibility and save interest on the monies that we owed to TriMark for the transportation impact fee. So we issued $49.7 million worth of bonds, and by the way, because the rates were so good, we actually generated over $55 million in proceeds, uh, from that bond issue, but the principal amount was $49.7 million. And that paid down, you know, a significant portion of our, all of our debt to TriMark at a fixed rate instead of a floating rate. In addition, we also structured the bond, knowing that because these are transportation fees, and most of those fees are likely gonna be generated in the next 15 years, we really didn't wanna be paying those bonds for 30 years, so we structured it that as money came in above and beyond the debt service, we'd save a portion of that to make sure that we had a reserve uh, on top of the annual payments. But the furthest out bonds, which were the highest interest rate bonds, we would have opportunities in 2024 and 2026 uh, to reduce our principal. So we are now in that window where we can start paying down some of the bonds early. So we're making a, we have $10 million in excess traffic impact fees right now. Uh, and that $10 million is gonna result, that $10 million upfront now saves us $19.8 million over the life of the bonds, so we're, uh, everything, we've got everything happening on schedule as you anticipated when as the CSD you issued these bonds back in, uh, 2021. And, uh, if development continues to go as expected, we'll have another 10 and a half million of bonds that we can pay off in 2026, which will bring us a similar savings, so the, the, the 25- and 30-year bonds that were the highest-cost bonds, we're hoping to have all paid off by 2026. Further saving money. Uh, Parks and Rec, there, we've got a chart there on tennis court revenue is up, pickleball's here. And within the next couple of weeks, we're going to be painting the pickleball lines. I think our big decision now, and we're gonna talk to the pickleball communities on what color they want the lines to be. And so we're gonna get that determined, I think we've got a little more rain coming up over the next week, right Doug? So what's our estim- I can't remember, you gave me a date today, but I can't remember what it was. Two weeks. Two weeks out with the rain coming, we should be doing the painting in two weeks. And like I said, we'll figure out tomorrow what, we'll talk to the pickleball community about what color they wanna paint the lines. And just to note that the primetime seniors are gonna start meeting over at. And just to note that the primetime seniors are going to start meeting over at the Unity Center in April. And then don't forget, we've got our upcoming events, including Juneteenth, which should be listed on here for our summer events, along with our Central Park Cinemas, Independence Day, and our kite festival. And we're now looking at the State of the City for July 1st as well. Should have a location, working on a location on that right now, and don't forget about the bike rodeo. And then we got our neighborhood watch signs up in Cortis, and so we still have, looking for more folks to put together neighborhood watches. Any questions?
Nope. You did great. Do you have a question?
I'm formulating.
Formulating. How about you guys on that side? No? All right. Item 10.1, Report of Future Agenda Items and Long-Range Calendar.
All right, let's get it up on the screen. Our next meeting is on April 9th. Let's see if we can get it up on the screen. I don't have it all memorized yet for April 9th, so I need it on the screen. Everybody put their better glasses on for that, so. So you can see we're, most of the, we'll be bringing back your strategic plan and team building report at the next meeting, and some enhancements to our code enforcement ordinances, and we'll be bringing back the design for the rec center, as we're trying to keep that on schedule as well. And hopefully, we'll be bringing back Doug's program. We've just got to make sure we clear it through risk management first. Then on the 23rd, I know folks have been asking about our unmet transit needs work, and so hopefully that'll get it away with the consultant contract on the 23rd. Hopefully, very positive, we're going to get the fire agreement to you on April 23rd as well. We'll get you an update on the logo. I think we got the guidance we needed on the general plan, so we'll probably come back with next steps at that meeting, give you a little more information. And then the NFIP, one of those other things that we have to transition from the county to the city, that has to do with floodplain management. And then don't forget that we now have combined the May 14th meeting to be both our budget study session at 5:00 and the regular council meeting at 7:00. And we also wanted to figure out what date, what dates were we looking at, Marty, for the, we wanted to get everybody's calendar out for the fire station grand opening, 23rd or 24th?
The 23rd. At 4:00 p.m.
Those are Mondays and Tuesdays, right?
Yes.
So is there a preference on the 23rd or 24th for the grand opening of the fire station?
Wait, which Monday?
In June, I'm sorry.
June.
June 23rd or June 24th?
If the 23rd is a Monday, that would be my preference.
Everybody okay with a Monday?
Hold on.
In June. We were thinking 4:00?
Hold on.
I'm sorry, I turned you off. Possibly 4:30.
4:30, that's what I meant, sorry.
Okay, what time?
4:30.
Fire station?
Yes, at the new fire station. Monday, June 23rd.
Okay.
And we've got some other calendaring ones we'll get to at the next, let's see, I think that'd be after the next meeting. Tentatively, there's also, Mountain House Developers is shooting for April 12 to have a grand opening of their project out north of Byron, their housing project north of Byron, getting the models open, assuming, I think assuming they can get MID out there in time. But if you want to, I don't have a time on that yet, but just tentatively on the afternoon of Saturday, April 12th. And that's not our event. And then the mayor has requested, on our Founder's Day of July 1, to do our State of the City, I'm assuming at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock, and we've contacted the school district to see if the auditorium is available that evening. You know, I don't know if they're doing any, Kirk wasn't sure whether they're doing any summer renovations there or not.
How many seats is that?
I think there's what about, it's a pretty good-sized auditorium.
I think it's about like a...
Oh, no, it's not nearly that big, but typically...
No, I think it's about like 100 to probably 300 maybe, wouldn't you say?
That's a big range.
More than 100.
No, 100 is what we're anticipating attending.
It's in the five, it's definitely in the five range.
I think it's in the 500 range, yeah. But it should be more than enough for this kind of event. Typically, these states, the state of the city, you'll get a couple hundred people.
How long is it?
Two hours. So we're looking at like 7:00 to 9:00 on July 1st.
Central Park with some chairs wouldn't suffice?
We cannot, no, not in the summertime.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
Really think we need to do indoor, and I think, I hope, that's probably the best indoor venue we could use in the summer, and unless they're doing some kind of renovation, it should be available.
350 is the capacity.
350?
More than enough.
More than enough. Think Tracy had, what, about 120, they said?
Yeah.
At their event? Stockton, we had 1,600, but that's a whole different type of event.
No, we haven't decided, 6:00 or 7:00?
So do you want to shoot for 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock for the State of the City on July 1st? It's a Tuesday.
Seven.
7:00 o'clock on Tuesday, July 1.
Maybe social, social hour for the first...
Maybe at the social hour at 6:00.
Isn't most of them done during the day?
Not necessarily.
Not a weekday, though.
My comment on that is that for the State of our City, most people do work, and we want the city to attend, so having the evening would be much better. I do know that when the county supervisor has him, you're drawing for a different group of people. So I think that we're more prone, we're a, kind of a bedroom community, and we want the people who occupy those beds to come.
Yeah, in fact, the county supervisor couldn't stay at this Tracy City address because he had to go to work.
And I do have a question on the State of the City event, which I think is a wonderful idea. We will be exactly one year old. Are we considering any of their, our business partners that, other than the school, that contribute to the growth and well-being of Mountain House? Give me any reports.
Yeah, everybody.
Okay. Like Delta College and...
Yes.
Everybody.
Okay.
Safeway.
Maybe, maybe Safeway.
No, not Safeway.
Kidding. All right. Any other items? You wanted to add something?
I think you had, you had mentioned, and Councilmember Green had mentioned that, I guess it's been in three or four other communities, they've shown this fentanyl movie.
Yes.
And we are reaching out to county public health right now to see if they'd be willing to, they sponsored it in these other communities. It's not a large cost. I think it was $150 for the movie, and then some other just associated costs for renting the venue, such as the Grand Theater and Tracy. And then they have a Q&amp;A session afterwards. So we're looking into whether or not public health would sponsor it. If not, is there an interest in the city sponsoring that? Maybe putting in TH1 or something like that and working, but I'm hoping we can get public health to sponsor it here as they did in these other communities.
So, because I had an opportunity to watch the movie, and the TH1 would not be, would not suffice to hold this movie. However, the gentleman, or the young man that produced this movie was a high school junior from Los Gatos High, and when he found out we had interest in showing the movie, he gave us the rights to show the movie. So we don't have to pay for it, we have the rights to show the movie. Everything is set in place. I would ask that we work with public safety because it is a public safety epidemic, this fentanyl crisis. And I think we owe it to our community to inform our community really what's going on. And one of the things that I realize is that parents don't realize until it's too late what their kids are doing. So it's very important to me to reach the parents and not just the kids, because the kids that are using the drugs, they're not coming to watch this documentary. However, if we inform the parents, then I think that will help, at least try to curb some of the drug use that we have here in Mountain House. And we do have buy-in from the district attorney, because again, it is a crisis, so that is my ask on May 7th, which is Fentanyl Awareness Day, that we show this documentary here in Mountain House.
I have a question, Councilmember Green. Have you considered the partnership also with the school?
Hmm.
And getting them involved?
The reason...
They're the ones that have the kids that we can get outward to the parents and what have you. Just a thought, just a thought.
Mayor Sue, would you like the...
I would direct that question to the high school.
Mayor Sue?
No, you, go ahead.
Okay. This documentary was brought to the high school first, before it was even brought to Tracy, and the high school did not want to show the documentary at the school because they did not want the attention being drawn to the high school and the drug problem at the high school. So yes, the high school had an opportunity to show it first, and they didn't take it. So as the city, I feel like it is our responsibility to show it, and I just ask for your support.
And the chamber has offered to provide the video wall and audio if the city can provide facility to host it, like the plaza.
I would just ask if we can work together with public safety and get their input also on the best way to present it and place and stuff, so.
All right, if there's consensus that we can work on this, we'll do it, so.
Absolutely. You got my buy-in, Ronan.
I think it's a great idea, but even though supposedly the school said no, not to exclude them, because we're in partnership, not to exclude them, to give them an opportunity to come and partner.
Absolutely not. I thoroughly agree with you. I don't want to exclude anybody.
No.
Not the school, not the parent, you know, just, that's why I feel like it's important for the city to do it.
All right, so let's put it on the next agenda or the next...
Right, we'll bring it back the next meeting, and we'll work on it in the meantime, so April 9th.
Any other items? If not, let's move on to council comments. Let's start on the right today. Councilmember Disco.
Don't mind if I do. Just a reminder that Sunday, April 14th, will be the Safari Kid ribbon cutting and grand opening party, and everyone is open and welcome to attend. We ask that you RSVP through mountainhousechamber.com so that the host or the business can facilitate the amount of people. The theme is a kids' carnival with bounce houses, games, face painting, food and refresh, or excuse me, snacks and refreshments.
Did you mean 13th?
What'd I say? April, Sunday, April 13th?
13th, yeah.
Yeah, Sunday, April 13th, and that's in Bethany. And tentatively, Saturday, Saturday, May 10th, will be the ribbon cutting and grand opening for Vida at Mountain House, the second phase of Aviara's apartments with the new townhomes for rent, and that's pending the completion of their amenities, because right now they are starting to move people in in the coming week, but they are still using the leasing office of Aviara until they finish the main office.
Did you give a time for the Sunday, April 13th?
Sunday, no, thank you. Sunday, April 13th starts at... Yep, thanks, Amanda. 10:00 is the start time. It'll run from 10:00 until 2:00 p.m.
Okay.
And then also, the Mountain House High School seniors are hosting their third annual Mountain House High School Car Show on Saturday, April 19th, which is a Saturday after Safari Kids.
No, 19th.
19th, 19th. April 19th, from 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. It's $20 to enter your car or $30 at the gate, and details for registering your vehicle can be found on Mountain House Events for that. That's all, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Green.
I thought everybody's presentations today were really, really good. I really appreciate the work that you guys have, that staff has put into it. I know there's a little, very few glitches, but I think that the direction that we're going in is really good. So that's it, thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Sue. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff for how you promptly keep up with our calendars and keep us abreast of the various activities, how you keep our calendars in check. I really appreciate that. And the other thing is I would like to announce or remind everyone for this coming Sunday, March 30th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. in our city plaza, there will be the Caesar Chavez recognition. There will be a program from 2:00 to 4:00. Ask that everyone come out and join. There will be lots of information as to why the celebration and history on Caesar Chavez. So the city is welcome to come out and join us this coming Sunday, March 30th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Harrison.
No, I don't have anything.
Nothing? All right. I'm good. Let's see. Attorney, city attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything this evening.
Oh, shucks. City Manager Steve?
I just have one more quick thing. Margaret will get you some more information to see if anybody's interested in the City Leaders Summit, April 23rd to 25th. I've been getting more information on that.
Where is that again?
That is up in Sacramento. There's some training and then meeting with the legislators between the 20, from the 23rd to 25th.
We have a meeting on the 23rd.
Correct, but it's also on the 24th and 25th, so we'll get you the information.
All right. Thank you, Steve. If there are no, or further comments, let's adjourn the meeting to Wednesday, April 9th. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.
8:58. All right. Grab my bag?
No, sir.
That's yours?
Do you want one like this, though?
No. Oh, it is mine back now. All right, he has some questions for us?
Oh, yes. Yeah, for me.
Andrew Spars is waiting, too.
Oh, here, have a seat.